Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We are at the office of the township of Adelaide-McCaff. It's Monday, June the 2nd at 6:00 PM. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Uh, councillor Kingma? Sure.
Through the mayor, councillor Kingma has declared pecuniary interest on an item from May 20th as he was absent is that item 9A, the water drain, accept petition and appoint engineer. And we have received that.
Okay, so that's so noted and recorded. Before we get into the focus of the meeting tonight, I just wanted to mention that yesterday I had the privilege of attending the Middlesex County Agriculture Hall of Fame presentation and their annual meeting. And one of the recipients was a gentleman by the name of Burton Matthews. And the Matthews have deep roots in our community. Up and down Naperton Drive. And Burton was born in 1926, passed in 2004. He was raised on a farm near Kerwood and showed great academic potential as a student. He entered the Ontario Agriculture College at 16, then achieved a Bachelor of Science in Agriculture from the University of Toronto in 1947, a Masters from the University of Missouri in 1948, and a PhD in 1952 from Cornell University. He returned to Guelph as an assistant professor, contributed to soils, science, research, and was a department head from 1962 to 1966. He was known as Doctor Dirt to his students and held a number of positions from 1966 to 1988. Burton was president of the University of Waterloo and then the University of Guelph. Throughout his career, he took part in many leadership roles encouraging interdisciplinary studies and researching complex issues of modern society. His nomination is based on his contribution to agricultural education, soil research and collaboration. So I'd just like to extend our congratulations to the extended family, Matthews family, because that's a great honour. It was the 25th anniversary and just as a term of reference, another Adelaide-McCaff resident was actually the first recipient, and that was Matt Cuddy. So having given you that little history lesson there, I'll now turn the meeting over to Morgan to give us some context around the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clerk. And if you folks don't mind, I just want to provide real quick background and briefly set the stage for this presentation. So on September 26, 2024, Peter Budd and Venfor provided delegation to council on the IESO, its procurement activities, and what the future of some long-term procurement items might look like. Council was really left with a number of questions that were compiled and reported back to council on January 13, 2025. A lot of these questions were around additional information that it requires to make an informed decision on whether or not it's going to provide a municipal support to any potential project being submitted to the IESO. During that staff report, council also understood that this particular project spans two municipal boundaries, being Adelaide-McCaff and Brook Alvinston. So it really directed me to work collaboratively with Brook Alvinston. And it has really been an excellent partnership with that community. Working with Venfor and at the direction of council, as much information as possible has been made open, so appreciate that as well. There are some key pieces of information that's proprietary to the project that will need to be provided and closed. But really, the point of this, this meeting is for council to receive information. We're not really making decisions yet. We haven't moved on to community engagement. Those are a couple of big points in time that are left for the future. So if council is comfortable with, with what it hears today, it could direct Venfor to proceed to the next step, which would be to engage with the community. Council may not have all the information that it wants to receive today, but may be comfortable enough to proceed to community engagement so then we can run those two processes in parallel. Or council might make a different decision. So all that to say is, we're here to receive information and determine whether or not we'll proceed to the next step, which is community engagement. Over to you. Mayor Clerk.
Okay, thank you for that background, Morgan. So at this time, we will turn it over to our delegation from Venfor Inc. And I welcome Peter, Tanya and Jim to the meeting. So I'll turn it over to you.
Here we go. How's that for a sound check? We're good? Great. So thank you very much for having us here. It's always nice to come home and work with local friends and family. To my left is Tanya Mackey, who works closely with, with me and with us on a number of projects. And Tanya's background is an engineer. And she's been with some of the larger construction companies and she's a professional project manager. To my right is Dr. Jim Salmon, who started his young career as an oceanographer and somehow ended up with the birds and the wind. And Jim has designed Jim has designed wind farms all over the world and particularly in Canada. And we were delighted. Jim and I have been friends in the industry for over 30 years. When we first met each other at the Association of Power Producers of Ontario. And had a steadfast friendship. Jim is a shareholder of Venfor as well as I am. So again, thank you very much for allowing us to come. I'd like to get into a little more detail than we have in the past for the public record, because I'm expecting that the public may view this particular meeting. And I'd like there to be plenty of information out there. So in the spirit of transparency about the company itself, this was created a few years ago as a strictly early-stage development company. A company that would put together a wind project and event, sorry, and invite a larger partner with a deeper balance sheet at the right time to consider joining. So that would be pretty much now. We are engaged with other companies that I'll get to in a moment. So we've got some strong interest and there's a confidence level in the project from large companies that we've been engaged with. But just the fun part about Venfor, when we were putting the company together was, having been married to a French woman, I wanted to have something that made sense. And so "vont" and "fort" was how we came up with Venfor. And indeed, the wind resource here, as Jim can tell you later, is, is quite good. Particularly at upper elevations with the convection of the lakes. So we, we were ready to go and to do this, and we have invested quite a bit of time and effort into the project. And we're confident that this is a good place to do business. And, and so we are full speed ahead, green going lights, looking at possibly, if the stars align, filing on October the 16th this year for what's called LT2. And I'm reasonably sure council and staff are aware of the ISO's progress on LT2 and the need to move forward with securing and procuring more electricity supplies in the province. Which takes me to 1.2 in the brief, which is that Ontario's got a electricity shortage a little bit. If you look at the NERC website, that is the North American Electricity Reliability Corporation. And the link is, I think, provided in this document. You'll see that in May, just recently, it was announced that Ontario has a pretty thin reserve margin. When I was the director of the ISO, that reserve margin was about 10 times the size of what it is right now. And so it's pretty thin. And if it's any indication, last year we had five emergency events in Ontario. And we're deeply importing from the States 2,000-something megawatts. This year, it's anticipated we'll probably need to import 3,000 megawatts when we're in these periods of shortage. So it does matter to our food industries, to our agricultural industries, of course, to have a reliable electricity system. And the point of frankly, bringing this project opportunity here was, as I may have mentioned, that I thought if the community could do better and get a little bit in the energy business and derive some additional revenue, because it's going to happen around Ontario, why would we not give that some consideration here? And so that, that hopefully explains then, with a 75 to, I think frankly, it's going to be about a doubling of the system that you got now. So every tower you see, every generation piece you see, that is going to double in 25 years. And that's never happened in the history of the world before, where people rushed that quickly. If you think about it, it took Ontario 125 years to build the system we've got right now. And we're going to try to double that in 25 years. So it's coming and, and it's essential. And the key drivers are, of course, EVs. We see that up and down, up and down, but it's, it's moving that way. Certainly, the city folk do that more than the folks in the country. But electric heat pumps have actually really improved. And they are helpful through a lot of the year when you could avoid fossil, which has been expensive, notwithstanding the withdrawal of the carbon tax. So the stars are essentially kind of aligning for that growth in electricity usage. And our view was, why not, you know, participate? Those were the roots of it. Our, I hope that sort of covers a little bit on the contributions. But I really felt strongly that, having been local here, that this was a matter where the residents here deserve to have some financial recompense. And at no expense of them, but a one-way street for the money to flow and the work to be done in a way that satisfies the municipality. I will jump a little ahead of myself and say that I saw the road user agreement that was tendered and it was great drafting. Good work. I thought it was very comprehensive and it's strict and disciplinary. But it was very good. And as a taxpayer in this municipality, I thought good on the firm that did the drafting. I was happy about that. And I have no changes to make to it at all. But in any event, you know, so we move forward and we realize that, you know, for the next 20, 30 years, while this is happening, we need to be ready. And this project will last at least 20 to possibly 30 years. We do not know yet what the government is going to do about whether it's a 20-year contract or a 30-year contract. But I did hear from Barbara Ellard at the Ontario Petroleum Institute Conference on Thursday last week that it so far is a 20-year contract. But I've also heard that when the procurement happens, it may be that it's 25 or 30. So we don't know that right now. And probably doesn't really matter that we know that right now. But what I want you to know is that whatever it is that we're going to do with you, it will be CPI'd through the whole life of the contract, whether it's 20, 25 or 30 years. And that last decade actually makes quite a difference to that revenue flow. It really, it really helps. So we did take a bit of a comprehensive approach to saying, knowing neighbors on both sides where I am, you know, who's interested. And we just put it out there for those who were. Some are, some aren't. And, and many who said they were, you know, carefully looked at Dr. Salmon's maps and were thoughtful about it. They looked at the option agreement. I think I provided you with one of those. If I haven't, I certainly will. So you can see what it is that is in place, that each of the landowners, landowners has volunteered and signed. As councillor Brody said, the last time we were together, these, these are citizens who are knowledgeable and sophisticated. And they have made the choice to invite turbine placement on their property and to work with us and, and the wind company that we will select. We do have a, an excellent opportunity to connect to the grid. And perhaps in some respects, people should start with that, because if you don't have a place to connect and you can't get your power out to the grid, there's no point in a project. But this area does have sufficient capacity. And we know this from the TAT and DAT, T-A-T and D-A-T studies that are done by the ISO. And they confirm what is the available capacity on which circuits. So we, of course, have got a few lines running through our municipality. And there is capacity particularly on the southern one. We're satisfied with that and are working toward that connection. But we know that connection point is there and that's not us hoping and guessing. That's the ISO telling us, yes, there will be available capacity on that line. So that's very important. And we've identified some of that in section 1.4. I go on to point out in section 1.5 that there will be a bid submission. And after that goes in, as I mentioned, on October 16th, it will be about six months, the ISO says, for it to work all of the choices of the various projects they get all over the system to know which ones fit and which ones need to wait or which upgrades need to be done. And they'll, they do all of that inside that six-month period. So we should know if we get to, to that point, with or without the other municipalities, this project could go, in any event, just for this municipality, if others were to say no. So I want you to be aware, it's not absolutely tied. It'd be preferable if it is. But, you know, this municipality could move ahead with an MSR and proceed. And we could know then in the spring next year, so we're thinking probably about March, April, if we win the bid. So by Q2 2026, that information should be available to us. And, and then the clock ticks after you receive the contract notification. And we'll talk a little bit about that scheduling. It's at the back end of this presentation. If it's all right, Mayor Clerk, maybe we could just skip the map of the project site area that we have and, and just move to point out that in item three, as I mentioned, there is sufficient capacity and the circuits are listed there. And, and anybody's welcome to have a look at those. So, okay. Jim has the up-to-date information, I think, on the number of landowners and the number of sites. But we're looking at about 3,000 acres that are under option here, where landowners can make, have made the choice to say yes. And, and then, of course, once those optioned areas are chosen and narrowed down, then it becomes just a laneway to the turbine, which I know you are all familiar with because you've seen that here. And then the very small, less than one acre actually footprint of each turbine. We do have sophisticated neighbors here. You know, these are people that are in, you know, significant businesses and operating them. And as I said earlier, they, they've made good choices without naming any names. Some have said, I would like the revenue for our family so I can set it aside for capital gains purposes. Another would say, you know, that would be a great pension for me and for my wife. And there are, you know, no end of, you know, people who thought of different reasons why they would say yes. And some would say no, because they weren't sure where they were going to put another chicken barn or turkey barn and just needed to keep that particularly parcel clear in case of that. So it was a very amicable, as you could imagine, and friendly dialogue with everybody that I spoke with about it. And, and it's been quite enjoyable, frankly, lining the project up. We, we also did use a professional land company called Alexco. They're based in London. They have extensive land experience in the States and here, arranging things for pipelines and easements. And we did that specifically so that the project is perfect. That is to say, every registration is perfect. Everything is done so that when you get into the highway of development, there are no, you know, bumps. You've, you've taken into account everything as perfectly and professionally as possible. And that was my commitment to our shareholders. And it is my similar commitment to you, that the project will be handled in that way all the way through. The option lease agreements and siting and roadways was a topic, of course, that many of the farmers, farmers who considered the project wanted to be involved with. And I identified three main things, which I pointed out in here. One is, and we learned this from 20 years ago, we need to be sure when we're going to break a tile, that we get that tile properly fixed. And so I've said that I think it's important for the landowner to pick the tile contractor of his or her choice. And that that landowner has that freedom to make that selection, because they know how important getting their fields drained is or are. And so that was one. So that was a guarantee that will happen. Secondly, laneways. Every farmer knows how he or she likes to conduct their farming activities. You know, how do they approach planting, plowing, harvesting? And I've seen it, you know, with my friends around my place. And some of them would say, you know, if I had a road down that back, I'd, I would just be great when I'm in the wet and the fall and the combine, just that narrow place down the fence line or something like that. And so I've made it clear internally, and it will be clear to whoever the buyer is, that the landowner gets to say where the permanent road goes, unless there's some really unreasonable situation, like a topography issue or something. You know, that's a duty of the wind company and I'll stay involved to ensure that the landowners are happy with where the laneways go. You could guess that with the equipment, when it comes in, it may need a different pathway across a field to get to somewhere, and that may be temporary. But when that is done, that would be cleaned up and the soils returned to their original state and cloud and disc and so forth. And then the original road, sorry, the, the final road for maintenance would just really be for a pickup truck to go do the weekly checks and so forth. So again, none, none of this is, you know, unknown to us. We, we've lived with the wind turbines in the area. We've learned what was good and what needed to be improved. And then finally, the commitment of the company is and will always be that any expense, certainly in respect of any kind of taxation that may come, because you can never know what the province might do or what somebody else might do with taxation jurisdiction, that that landowner will be held whole and not have to pay for any of that whatsoever. That's in the documents. So the landowner feels safe and preserved on that front. I wanted to be sure that we don't dump any costs on the landowners, just as I don't want any costs dumped on the municipality. I want the wind company to bear those costs appropriately as part of their business. Of course, there will be engineering studies, which, when I received, and thank you again, Morgan, the road user agreement very, very clearly specifies that the engineered drawings of where the wires will go in consultation with your road superintendent and your team, you'll decide that with those engineers. And that will be what, you know, we abide by, of course, during the construction. So that routing study will occur now that we know where the people are that have signed up. And Jim has got some ideas about that. So do I. We've got, you know, certain landowners that are right under or at the connection points. So there will be a convergence of the wires to that particular connection location. There may be one in Brook Alvinston and there may be one in Adelaide-McCaff. Instead of, you know, just one, there may be two, is what I'm saying. The engineers will figure that out and tell us. The other commitment that I have, want to be very clear about is that we will bury every wire that we can. We want as many of the wires, we all know what happens in ice storms and, you know, poles and collisions. And we just want everything as buried as possible and equally as marked as possible. So there's no errors, you know, the call before you dig. And just, you know, use really best practices, right? Because that's what we can do in this township. If we're going to turn into a little bit of an energy, energy hub, we've already got Don Drew Falger coming right through. That's how I kind of got the energy business as a kid. And, you know, it's like 40 feet from my door, if, if even that far. So yeah, we're familiar with, you know, making it all work well. So our power line routing study will be a thorough document that you'll have at your fingertips as soon as it's done. And we'll have input on the way through while it's being developed. One of the features that the province put to us and to every developer is that there's going to be an agricultural impact assessment. So this is new. We have not seen all of the details of the criteria that are in the AIA, as we're now learning to call it. But it is more detailed than the environmental impact assessment, we're told. We're perfectly good with that. We respect farmland and they're not making any more of it. In fact, it's disappearing, as we know, in places. But it's a balance, right? And so our hope is that wind, for example, I'll just do a little plug, even though you've drive by my place, you'll see solar panels on the barn roofs. Wind just generates so much more electricity than solar for the amount of farmland that it does take. So, you know, the footprint of a turbine now that is like six or eight megawatts is still probably not a whole lot larger than the size of this room. So that's pretty effective generation for the number of megawatts that can feed thousands of homes. You know, depending on the size of those things. So we've come a long way, frankly, in 20, 30, 40 years, right? It's been quite impressive. So the ag impact assessment, as soon as we know the rules, you'll probably be aware of them as, as will we. I'm sure the province will send them out to us. And then we'll all, we'll all get on that. That's the, that's just a normal thing that will be built into the project development. If I could turn now to the community benefits agreement. I sent Morgan a pared-down, slimmed-down, simpler CBA, because I don't want to have this scenario unfold. So in some jurisdictions in the States, for example, they have community benefit agreements where the wind company kind of controls a little bit what the municipality does with the money that the wind company gives the municipality. I find that a little unusual, too offensive. And if, the buds would never do that. So the bottom line is, when you will receive your payment, you will do with it as elected people, which you choose. And which is in the public interest. And you'll know that better than anybody, because you have these meetings every week or two. And, and so that's, I took that agreement and I slashed out a number of sections that I thought were onerous on the municipality and made it much simpler. And I hope you'll find that that's a better situation. So. I promised the last council at Brook, at Brook Alvinston that I would do that. When I read it over again, I thought, we don't need to have some of this. So that's out. And you have a new one now that you are welcome to share. And I think Morgan and Janet are going to take that over to the council. And over the next weeks and months, we'll work that through, as will the road user agreement. And, and just, just on that CBA, I have done some homework on that even since last week, when there was a request to, you know, adjust it. And I, the $300,000 per 100 megawatts is actually above market a bit. And I'm fine with that. I think that's perfectly good. Apparently, the average is 2,000 a megawatt. I've told you already, I'm making it three. And, and we're happy to have it stay at three. And, and it is indexed. So at the CPI index, you can do that math of whatever the megawatts are times the 3,000 a megawatt. And, and it's, it's a healthy amount of money every year. And it will turn into millions over the, the life of the project. And while I, I won't get into a whole lot about your existing turbines, I have mentioned it that, you know, you might want to have a look at how that unfolds when those contracts are renewed. So there's a parity of sorts. On community impacts, you know, we've done our best to think about them, but we certainly want to hear, even though I live here, I would like to hear from staff and council and your worship, if you've got any other ideas about things we need to do that would make things better. But I again, want to just let you know, I read the road user agreement word for word. And I think you're, you're in very safe hands with that agreement. And I expect that the senior wind developer partner with the deep pockets and the balance sheet will have no difficulty actually, living up to those things with the proper kind of project management that Tanya has taught me is to be done on-site. I was particularly interested, frankly, in the detail that was put into things that are moving and when they're moving on your roads. I thought it was very well done. You know, proper notices to be given, times booked ahead. These are all things that make a lot of sense, you know, when you've got the public moving around with tractors and ag equipment and so on. So I just want you to know that we are fully committed to that. And the road user agreement speaks to a lot of those points. So I thank you for taking that on with your council and delivering a really comprehensive document. We will indeed be looking for a First Nation partner. We've kind of got an idea about who that might be already, but we like that. And it's not at all just because you, you know, may score more points with the bidding process or whatever. For developments that I've done, like transmission lines and other things, I just believe those folks want to come on in. That's great. We like that. They've got a great opportunity through different loan guarantee programs that the province has set up. And, and we know they work. And, and there's equity ownership opportunities there. And it just helps the whole community, you know, make really great progress. So we do it because we want to, not out of obligation. I think it's the right thing to do. And then finally, on item 12, on the project rollout, I'll just touch on it lightly. And then maybe I can ask Tanya to speak to that a little bit and maybe Jim too, and cover off anything that I have not. Just though in your note here, you'll see that in advance of October 16th, we have got, you know, a few things that we have to have thought about. But there is a process through that whole development timing where you can see the number of permitting implications that are there on the dashes in the middle of that page. Uh, implications that are there on the, the dashes in the middle of that page. So in LT two, uh, you know, we will have, uh, basically filed in October, as you know, you'll hear, we'll hear together back in, uh, Q two next year. If we've won, if we do, that basically, uh, kicks off the window to move ahead. And I think you also know that the project can't even file, cannot file. On October sixteenth without your blessing in the form of, uh, MSR. So, uh, we're good with that. We know, uh, where that comes from and we're all right with it and, uh, we hope we satisfy your. Your requirements. So you can see the list of the studies here. That basically are all going to be part of what's called the REA. This is not a brand new concept. The renewal energy approval process. Um, it has been in place, uh, for. Quite some time and it will take about a year, a year and a half to finish those particular studies that you see. And then when they're done, then you can get on, uh, when you get what's called a notice to proceed, an NTP. After you've, uh, completed your REA, the government will, they say, okay. We're satisfied. You have the project lined up. You had every road figured out. You've done. Everything citing each turbine, you've done your micro sighting, you've done your geotech. Like everything, they'll give you your permission to proceed. And I would like counsel to, uh, think about and possibly if you'll trust me on that, take some comfort. That's a very vigorous process that other agencies look after on. The public interest behalf. So, uh, you, you won't need to spend a lot of time on that. I'm sure you'll be interested in hearing how it all goes. Uh, but, uh, the province definitely keeps a very close eye on that before it gives anybody the NTP that notice to proceed. So, uh, uh, once that happens, then the build goes on and, uh, maybe I could ask you, Tanya, to speak to that chart. And, uh. See what you want to tell us about how that all works. Thank you.
Yeah. So as Peter mentioned with the, uh, the contract, we're expected early twenty twenty-six. Um, followed by the REA process and NTP. So that's about a four year to get to COD. So, um, that's the, the overall timeline. There's, um, a nice year in twenty twenty-six. With the builder as Peter spoke about to. Outside of the RA, so the construction management plans, the working with you, the community. On, on what needs to happen before they get a shovel in the ground. Um, so that's what is expected of whoever's going to be building this. Um, as Peter said, the REA is an established process. Uh, all permits, um, you know, noise assessment, uh, groundwater. Uh, land use planning, uh, site plan approvals happens in that phase as well. Um, traffic, uh, the AIA, so the agricultural impact assessment, there's the first component, they're naming it. And those rules, as Peter said, aren't out yet, but the ISO, um, is planning on the next month issuing the RFP documents for the, uh, window one. That's what they said as of May fifteenth on the last webinar. So the A, the, the component one AIA needs to be out. At the same time by, uh, OMAFA. Um, and the component two is for the A is the second part of it, which is done by the, uh, proponent. Both of these components is to your satisfaction, the municipal's, uh, municipality satisfaction. Um, so NT, NTP happens along with, and then EPC is about three years. So engineering procurement, uh, in construction with the COD. In twenty twenty-nine, the ISO has set, uh, May for twenty thirty, that COD has to take place. So it's, um. You know, workable within those timelines that the ISO has set out, um, and a bit of a chart here to help explain that.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And COD is commercial operation.
Thank you.
That's great. Just, uh, all sorts of acronyms going on here. Yeah. No, I, before I, uh, pause and, uh, we go to full question period. I wanted to ask Jim if you would just talk a little bit about how these projects are conceived and like laid out. Uh, how you think about turbines and distances and setbacks, if you could just speak to that.
Uh, sure. I'd be glad to, Peter. Oh. I'll move over closer to this mic. Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. Um. So when you, you design and lay out a wind farm, what you'd like to do is cram in as many turbines as you possibly can. Because you generate more electricity, you make more money. As it turns out, there are a lot of reasons why you can't do this. Um, so you, you go back to a sort of. A reasonable separation of turbine. Uh, and one of them is if you put too many turbines in too small space, too close together, they just interfere with each other. You end up not generating nearly as much electricity as, as you could if there was just one turbine. In that location. So that's. Um. One of the constraints of building a wind farm. Uh, so you have to spread them out. However, in, um, a rural location like this, spreading them out is, is usually fine. And usually you don't get all your property together anyways, like not all ten neighbors in a row. Sign up for the project, right? There's a person over here, a person over here, a person over there. Um, so that helps out, but there are a lot of other constraints. Um, for installing the turbines, uh, which you may well be, uh, familiar with already, but. Some of the primary ones are, um, distance from, uh, occupied residences. So in Ontario, that's five hundred and fifty meters minimum. Um, but there's also a noise constraint. And there's a very specific. Um, method. That, uh, the proponent is required to calculate, to estimate the noise at all residences. Um, and then some other places too, churches. Um, campgrounds, that sort of thing. Um, and, um, the noise has to be below forty DBA. Forty DBA is a pretty quiet noise level. Um, if I stopped talking, the noise level in this room would be around forty DBA. Um. There's setbacks from roads. Water courses, water bodies, wooded areas. You can't put turbines in wooded areas, at least not in this part of Ontario. Um, and then there's some more esoteric ones setback from airports, which probably won't impact. Here very much setback from airport navigation systems, possible setbacks from. Um, uh. Weather radars, aircraft radars, air navigation radars. Uh, and, um. I think that covers most of them. I'd be happy to give you a nice, long, comprehensive list. And we've actually done all of that here, uh, to design a prospective wind farm. The wind farm. Will look something like what I've designed, um, but changes, um, could happen. Uh, for a variety of reasons. Um. Uh. And I think that's probably, is that?
That's good.
What, uh? Is you'd like to know? Okay, good.
Thank you very much. We are open for questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions? Counselor Kinga.
Works. Uh, thank you. Through the mayor, I think this might be a good question for the doctor, but. Um. Setbacks are the same and yet these installations are very. Quite a bit larger, I guess you could say. Is there, uh, any consequence?
Uh, yes, um. Some of the setbacks are based on the size of the turbine. So if a turbine gets bigger, the setback gets bigger. Um, so yes, there is a consequence. Um, just for interest, I, I don't know exactly the size of the turbines at. The Adelaide Wind Farm. I would guess they are probably two megawatt turbines. They probably have about a ninety meter hub height. They probably have about. A fifty meter, um. A hundred meter rotor diameter, fifty meter rotor radius. So, um. Uh, one setback is, um, from roads. And that is the blade length plus, I think it's five meters. Um, yeah, so that would be fifty plus five, if it's a fifty meter rotor diameter. The turbines that would likely go in, in this project would be about. Um. Eighty-five meter, um, rotor radius. So now the setbacks would be more like ninety meters. From roads and that, that applies to other things too. To water courses, to water bodies, wooded areas.
Do the larger turbines have more low frequency sound?
Oh, that's a good question. Um. I can't answer that. I don't know that for sure. Um. It's not my area of expertise. I can find it out and I can let you know. Um, I would guess they have marginally more low frequency sound.
If you want to pause, I'll ask a couple of questions. Or Betty, and you have any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Sure, you, Mary Sue, to either of you. I don't care who answers it, but. Uh, I think I read in the user agreement that with the community funding. Does the community funding start as soon as approval is given or after the? When turbines are up and running?
Uh, I can help with that. So the, uh, the agreement, uh, has two things to it that I'd like to specify. Uh, one of them is that, uh, until the wind farm is up and actually running and operational and producing revenue. That's when the, when it produces revenue, that's when the payments start to flow thereafter. Uh, prior to that, of course, there's no real revenue being triggered by the, by generated. Yes, thank you. Uh, so, uh, that's how we've structured it. One other thing I wanted to mention though for council's benefit is in the road user agreement. I was impressed that the, uh, uh, the community benefits agreement tied into that. So that if, for whatever reason, the community benefits agreement somehow stopped or somebody defaulted on that. Municipality hit the ability to say that's the end of the road user agreement too. So it was a, a bit of a hammer. And I think it's a good idea. So, uh, I read that and I had a smile. I thought, there you go, Morgan. Yeah.
And you said that there was three thousand acres that you had an interest from nine landlord owners. Is that correct?
I'll turn that to Jim.
Yeah, I can, uh. Yeah, I didn't have this, uh, at hand for the, the. Brooke Alvinston meeting, so, but I do now. There are sixteen signed properties. Um, and it's closer to two thousand acres presently. Um. I can give you the full rundown. There are twenty turbines. Designed at this point, like I said, that can change. If turbine size is changed is if, um, one thing that won't force a change is, um. The noise assessment, because I've already done that for this prospective layout. For a, for a specific type of turbine, if the turbine changes, the noise assessment will change. But turbines, similar turbines are, um. Usually similar in noise characteristics. Um. There are sixteen signed properties with, uh, two thousand acres. Uh, there are one, two or three turbines on each property. There is one signed property that doesn't have a turbine because, um, I don't remember. It could be proximity to residences or it could be. Um, they weren't compliant with noise. Um, and there are about eleven different landowners, but I, I find that. Sort of hard to tell which landowners are indeed different because. Different properties go under different names or numbered companies and that sort of thing. So that's just my guess.
Okay, sorry, just for clarity, um. The, are the landowners all in Adelaide Metcalf that you're referencing? Like these two thousand acres, is it?
Yes.
Or is that with Brooke Alvinston?
Yeah, if you want to go to three thousand acres, if you added up the, the Brooke Alvinston and Adelaide Metcalf areas, it's just around. Yeah, three thousand. So that's probably where that number came from.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not the brightest person on all this stuff. Um, for example, the. The, we'll call it the Adelaide project that currently exists. Um, I know when that one was put in, there's, there's people that are actually down. Egremont that get a check in the mail. Uh, as from, and they don't even have a turbine. So is that, when you're talking about executed agreements. Those are landowners that have agreed to participate in the future, but may not. Uh, be producing energy. So will those landowners that don't have a turbine, would they receive a check? So for example. Up. Down, um. What's the last road before Egremont? The little. Road out there. There's people down there that don't have them and they, they get the check in the mail from Germany now. So I'm just trying to understand the math kind of behind it.
So the feeling was, uh, when a project is being assembled. That if, uh, a citizen landowner says, yes, I'd like to be a part of that project and it looks like you could put a turbine on the land. And we try to do that very thoroughly, but for some reason unknown, you just can't. And it may be because of the cumulative noise assessment. Uh, it could be because of, uh, a lot that somehow didn't show up on a parcel fabric that's a building lot. Uh, or it could be some other thing like that. That landowner, we appreciate the signup. And so that landowner would get a check for, I think it's a thousand dollars a year for the life of the project every year. Uh, just for having been, uh, kind and cooperative and having signed up. And, uh, and that's in the option agreement that I believe you have a copy of. So, yes, that is how that works with this company and with this project.
Okay, and, um. You mentioned, uh, one of your, um, selling features, if you will, is the, uh. The benefit to the municipality through the impact assessment. So as you know or don't know, agricultural land. Pays twenty-five cents on the dollar. That's the tax revenue that's raised. So. I don't, and I don't know the answer to this. That's why I'm asking the question. So does that one acre parcel that's taken out a commission, does that get zoned? Like, is that assessed differently? And it's like, like. Um, industrial or commercial, like, you know that?
I, I would expect and we've all anticipated that you would indeed, when you have the final layout. Uh, zone those particular locations, uh, not agricultural, but as, uh. As, you know, uh, commercial, as you say, or industrial. And then that would attract a higher tax rate and that would not be on the landowner. That would be to the account of the wind company. To, uh, help increase the revenues to the municipality.
Okay, I probably should have asked our treasurer, Johnny. So the, the properties that currently have them. Um, just for everyone's information, just so we have a, can you speak to that?
Yeah, for sure. A great question. Um, so the current wind farms, um, all turbines are assessed from MPAC. And they do receive the industrial class.
Thanks for clarifying, just in case someone's reading this and has that same question.
Thank you.
Um, and you, you did answer a lot of my questions along the way, so that's good. Um. Have you looked at our official plan? When you were designing this farm?
I think we, uh, did to some extent. We were in communication about the.
Yes.
The settlement areas that, that may have growth. I'll let, uh, Dr. Salmon.
Yeah, we did. I was, I was provided with, um. Uh, I was provided with two different types of documents. One was from Brooke Alvinston, uh. And one was here from, um. Adelaide Metcalf, uh, and they were different, but. I plotted them on the maps, all the different, um, zones, um, planning zones and. Compared them to where the turbines were. And here in Adelaide Metcalf, there was one turbine. Which was in a zone which, um, was not zoned to have turbines, uh. And I don't, yeah, uh, it was near a wooded area, a, a stream and wooded area and the. Most of the zones, um, followed. Uh, the Ontario base mapping, uh, for wooded areas, but this particular zone went further. Than that. And so when I was designing the wind farm, I kept the turbines out of the, um, the wooded areas. In the Ontario base mapping, uh, but it. I discovered later, when I got the zoning maps, um, that it was in a zoned area. Uh, it was zoned out and I moved it and it, it was fine. It, uh, it didn't impact anything else.
Good, thank you. Um, and then my last question, Peter will know from my background why I'm asking it. Um. Has, I've, I've been retired for a number of years and, uh, when this project went in, I had to. The, um. Do a lot of work regarding non-disturbance agreements. So, um, is, is the bank pushing back on any of that that you're aware of? Or they have an appetite for this or, um, has there been any? Has that issue been raised by anybody?
Haven't not even, hadn't heard that raised by anybody, uh, so far. No.
Okay.
No.
All right. I guess just the property owner would want to. I guess just the property owner would want to make sure that that's uh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And yeah, I was looking at the the map that we have in the package. Um, we'll go into close for more detail, but you were talking about capacity. So. This map that I'm looking at, like, I'm aware that the Longwoods project is being. Like, that's been approved by Ontario Hydro and they're ramping that up. So is that the one that you would be tying into and?
No.
No, okay.
No, we'd be tying into an existing line that is sufficiently capable of taking the power.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any other questions? I mean, some people might have questions for close, but that's probably the safe questions for now, so. Uh, Counselor Kingma, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just another. Comment on setbacks. Um. Yes, because the turbines are larger, their side, the setbacks will be increased, correct?
Yeah.
Um. In the, the five hundred and fifty meter thing.
Yeah.
That's still considered the standard, however, is that?
Um, it hasn't changed um since, well, since two thousand and five, I think. Um.
In light of that, has it come? Up in your uh field of expertise that maybe? These larger installations should have. That setback increased as well. And have you lobbied in that direction?
Um. No, I haven't lobbied in that direction. I. The the five hundred and fifty meter setback, I think, is a bit of a surrogate for. Um. Noise compliance, but you have to do noise compliance as well. So you have to be five hundred and fifty meters away and you have to be noise compliant. So I can't think of a good reason to change that five hundred and fifty meters. And which, and and I don't know where that number came from. Um, I think. The the simple noise compliance will keep your turbines well back from residences.
And out of curiosity, if you get. Community engagement that recommends that you increase the distance, what will you do with that information?
Um. We would follow the um noise guidelines for wind farms from MECP. So whatever they say, it should be, we would design to that.
Has the IESO? Made any uh overtures to MECP concerning setbacks?
That I don't.
And I don't uh know either, Counselor Kingma.
Maybe if I just add one more thing. I mean, you can prevent wind farms from coming here by. Changing that five hundred and fifty meter setback to, say, one point five kilometers. In that case, there won't be anywhere to put the turbines.
So just for argument's sake, if you're unsuccessful with this bid that you have to submit by October sixteenth. Is that, then you're done? Or do you have alternative financing?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Um. So for sure, we need to connect to the hydro one grid, which is, of course, operated by the ISO. But the way it's working is the ISO has four windows in this LT two. So uh, they've got one coming up in October. Next year, there'll be another one. The year after, there'll be another one, and I think I saw on the chart, the year after, there may be another one. And and these procurements are supposed to continue. We thought actually every two years. But the ISO has decided to kind of break them up and have them. Every year, but in smaller quantities, so they're a little more fine tuned as to what they want. Tanya is the one who sits in on the ISO webinars uh religiously. And so uh, she's very tuned into uh following those things. But that's my understanding from uh seeing Barbara Ellard's uh participation in the OPI conference last week. She showed a Gantt chart similar to what you had here from us with the years. And she showed every year they're going to do it. So the answer, Mayor Clark, is there are next windows, next windows, next windows. And that is exactly what she said in her remarks. So if you, for whatever reason, didn't make it into this window. Relax, she said. You'll have another chance the next year, another chance the next year, and so on. And these option agreements are for five years. And they have a flip renewable over an evergreen essentially to uh another five years if the wind company, us, wanted to do that. Uh, or we could just end it if we felt uh it was going nowhere. So. Yes, it will uh, it would, it would be a concerted effort to try to get it going. One note that I uh have said, a couple of people have asked prior is, what, what's the rush for October sixteenth? It it is this. To the extent there's anything kind of pressurizing us to, you know, get that move on and so on. It's because that capacity that's on that line right now is available. I can't know if that's going to be available next year or the year after, and it could be that it's gone. And then, as you've noted, there's a new line going in here, the Lake Shore Line, Honie's. Honie's going to be building lots of lines, Honie's going to be tearing down lines, Honie's going to be doubling the size of lines. Uh, the Bruce to Longwood, for example, has an easement right beside it for another five hundred KV line, which is the biggest towers we have in Ontario. And so, you know, expect to see that twinned. You know, you, everybody needs to understand, like, this is just going to keep going, right? So we, we, we don't want to lose the opportunity uh to, for everybody to benefit by moving uh for October sixteenth.
Thanks for clarifying. Did you have something?
Yeah, just add something to that. Yeah, as Peter said, the um. The connection guidance document gets updated after each window, both for the energy and the capacity streams. And the current document only predicts, or has in the document for up to twenty twenty nine. So lines that they can be sure will be in service by twenty twenty, or the COD is twenty thirty. So after that, you know, the next window would be later. So those lines aren't in the current connection guidance document because of the uncertainty of construction and that. So. Each, each year, we have to kind of relook at that, and as Honie speeds up, delay, we don't know. So all we can predict right now is what we have to date up to twenty twenty nine, twenty three.
For clarifying, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions before we go into close? Go ahead, Counselor McKinnon.
Uh, in the study, you'll be doing birds and bat study as well. And with the increased size in the turbines, do you anticipate any problems? With either birds or bats?
Uh, that's not my area of expertise. Um. From my non-expert point of view, I think it will be marginal. And the reason for that is, as turbines get bigger, uh, their parts don't get bigger very fast. Because the. Amount of energy produced depends on the radius. And um of, or the diameter or the radius of the uh, the rotor. And it grows fairly slowly. Oh, well, the power grows quickly compared to the slow growth of the radius of the turbines. So. Things don't change very much, and uh in terms of the way the rotor is moving around. The speed at the end of the rotor doesn't change. They slow the turbines. As the turbines get bigger, they slow them down. Because they produce too much noise if they go too fast. Um, so there's, there's a limit. So that turbine rotor will be going around at a slower. Revolution rate and at the same tip speed going around.
Okay, last call and open for any questions, the staff have any questions? Okay, seeing none then. Um, could I have a motion to receive the um presentation? Moved by Counselor Kingma, seconded by Counselor McKinnon, all in favor? We have a small council tonight. Okay, um, we have a recommendation that council adjourned a closed session at seven, at six fifty-nine PM. Pursuant to section two, three, nine, two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, as amended to discuss the following matters. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information. Supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which, if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly. The competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, an organization. Specifically then for inkwind turbine proposal. Could I have a motion that we go into close? Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Kingma, all in favor? And that's Gary. Thank you.